Everybody got a green light up there? That's good.
When I turn it on.
Okay. You know, I do have a, I have, well, I can mute everybody and I typically do that before we start. I've got everybody muted, so.
Okay. Ah, another one of those guys.
Push of a button.
Lot of Zoom meetings where they mute you, don't ya?
Mm-hmm. I have enormous power right here. Huge. Ready to go.
Yep. Nine o'clock and I call the county board meeting order and we'll begin with the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everybody that's here this morning. Roll call.
Commissioner Schlongen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Gopinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinan.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda. Have you any additions or?
Yes, Mr. Chair, one addition, the appointment of Angela Olson to the airport authority. If we could add that as the third item under administrator. Right after the public health emergency policies. And again, that's, that's all the changes that we had. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Open forum, is there anybody on the back that wishes to speak? Somebody could bring that list forward. I'll call on you as the list is brought up. Thank you, Monty. The first on the list is Jim Havda. When you come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good morning, I'm Jim Havda, 160 North Freedom Road in Rice, Minnesota. I'm here to speak on the issue of the mutual aid from Benton County to Minneapolis. I noticed that a request has been made for that, for that support mutual aid. And like every good law enforcement officer, it's, it's a laudable thing and it's something that should be done. However, there's, there's one issue that really comes to mind that I'm very concerned about. And that's who's paying the freight? If one of our officers gets injured, squad car becomes damaged, or the, the injury is, is long-term. The second is, five officers, we don't have a lot of coverage in our county anyway. And I would suspect that coverage will not be as good, it'll probably be adequate, but not as good as it could be. Keeping in mind that the, the call for assistance from Minneapolis is coming from a municipality that does not like the police. They've made several motions at the city council to defund the police. They've been not at all supportive of the police. The Hennepin County Sheriff and, and the mayor, neither one called for aid when they could have. They sat down and did nothing. As a result, the only police precinct in the country was burned to the ground. And, and for us to sustain costs for a, a long-term injury, if a deputy gets hurt or squad car gets damaged, us having to pay that bill is not acceptable. If they want us, they should pay for us. They don't want to pay for their own police and so they're passing the buck on to us. I'm very, very disappointed that Minneapolis would not say, hey, we need you. We'll pay for you if you're here. If that's not in the mutual aid packet and they're paying for everything, I'd support this 100%. But not if we, if we've got to foot the freight for a long-term injury, damage to a police car, that the taxpayers of Benton County would have to bite the bullet on.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mike, Mike Deppa. And then you could.
I signed in to show up for a meeting.
Okay, and otherwise, if you agree with the previous person, you know, that's fine.
I agree with the.
Okay. And then we have Michael Levenduski. Come, state your name and address.
Take this off or you gotta leave it on?
You can, whatever you wish.
Yeah.
Your choice.
Michael Levenduski, my address is 11709 85th Avenue Northeast, Foley. Everything Jim said I agree with, accurate. I'm just going to add just a couple of things to that. Jim's retired law enforcement, I'm retired law enforcement, Mr. Deppa, retired correction officer. So we got some knowledge to what we speak. First thing I'd like to ask, and we only have a short period of time here, but this trial starts next week. And this proposal, this contract is in front of you today. Shows the leadership of Minneapolis in that area. They want you to make a response. This should have been done weeks or months ago. Trial starts next week. Problems could start next week. And yet here it is on your desk today to have to make a decision. Nice, that's nice. What Jim said, as far as their staffing and the council, they have not taken steps to get the manpower back up to par. There should be at, you know, 888 officers, they're down to, I think, 750, 750s. Again, lack of support for the department, cut $8 million from the budget. And so they don't have the resources, I get that. And so they're reaching out for help. And they have Minnesota National Guard coming down, they have the state resources, the state patrol coming down, and any other law enforcement. I'm just going to read a quick section from Sheriff James Stewart, Noka County. Back in June of 2020, he published this letter, you can look it up, it's out there. It's about a page long, I'm just going to do about a paragraph. "If they choose, meaning Minneapolis, to eliminate their police department through defunding operations without a realistic plan, they must also choose to live with the consequences of their decision. We are one of many agencies. We have no appetite for going back to the city to restore order again, especially if their decision is to actively compromise the safety of their city. Cooler heads who seek actual answers while working with the community will find realistic answers. Those who embrace impulsive actions must live with their consequences. And I think we have all suffered enough from a variety of bad decisions." Again, that's Sheriff James Stewart, that's just a section of his letter. It's tough because you got cops down there that are going to suffer, get hurt, maybe get killed again. And I feel for them. If there's anything, you know, that could have changed their leadership, man, that should have been done long ago. But our cops, our deputies are going to go down there and stand on the line. And then you're going to have their council people look at them and call them Nazis and storm troopers and degrade them. And then what's worse, if they get hurt or killed, according to this proposal, you're on your own. I don't get it, I don't get it. How you can even propose something like that? And then have it here a week before they want you, a week in front of you to make that decision. Moving on, just a couple of quick things in closing. Minneapolis needs help, we get that. What Jim said about our response to this local community. St. Cloud had an incident several months ago, a young cop got shot while interacting with a suspect. Got shot in the hand. He was out of service for many months, he finally got back on the road. But because of that incident, that night, there was miscommunication amongst the public and somebody thought that a suspect got shot. A mob from South St. Cloud made their way up to the police department near the downtown area, damaging businesses, threatening people, were going to destroy the St. Cloud Police Department where I used to work. Threw rocks, broke windows. The next day, I went there to check in on the people that I know that still work there. They had cement barricades around the perimeter of the police department and guards standing the perimeter, okay? That's one little incident in St. Cloud, can be touched off at any time. Benton County comes up to our St. Cloud city, okay? Benton County is going to be asked to support St. Cloud if something like that happens again. And it's just a, it's just a radio call away from happening again. And when this trial starts, if, if local people here don't think that it's going to bleed over to the activists, if you want to call them that, up here, then you're misinformed and you're not planning. Because it's going to come to here, it's going to come to other cities across the country if this trial upsets the mob. So we need our resources here. I don't want them two hours away, I don't want them 15 minutes, I want them in Benton County. I think the majority of the county residents feel the same way.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, and thank you for your comments. So then we'll move on to the, there's nobody else on this, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Looking for approval for items one through nine. If anybody wishes any of them pulled, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve consent agenda items one through nine. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
At this time, I'm going to move from the administrator to Sheriff Heck. I think we have some people in the audience that spoke on this topic, so Troy, would you present?
Thank you, Commissioners. So, we have Minneapolis PD, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, and the Minnesota Department of Public Safety leading up an effort they've named Operation Safety Net. The goal of this effort is to ensure that public safety is maintained during and following the trial of Derek Shelvin. Today, I am presenting a mutual aid agreement to you for your consideration because we have been asked to assist in, in that effort. They put out and ask law enforcement agencies statewide and they have communicated that they very much need help to ensure that this, this trial happens and that public safety and order is maintained. A mutual aid agreement is a common tool used in law enforcement. We have a number of these with area law enforcement agencies, St. Cloud, Mille Lacs County. It's, like I say, it's a very common tool that we use to spell out the relationship that we have with other agencies when we do these mutual aid interactions. Mutual aid happens on a routine basis all the time throughout the state. Whether it's a, a small incident, going to help, going to back up maybe a state patrol officer or a fire department and police agency coordinating, we, we help each other all the time, that's what we do. And when things go sideways in a big way, we respond and help each other as well. And these agreements help lay the ground rules for the administrative stuff. In the field stuff, I'm confident that our people know how to do it and cooperate very well. This just lays the groundwork for what's going to happen once we start talking about how we're going to pay the bills and who's going to be responsible for what. The agreement before you is very similar to the other mutual aid agreements that are, that we have with other agencies. It is typical for both parties to agree that they're going to have their own workers' compensation agreement, insurance in place. It is typical that you're going to have the party requesting help indemnifying the responding parties. There's nothing out of the ordinary in this agreement. I can't argue with the, the comments that were made here that if Minneapolis is going to expect us to come help bail them out of a situation that they, I, I agree very much created and very much stoked that the ideal situation would be that they'd pay the entire freight. That, that, that would be an extraordinary ask for mutual aid agreement in my experience. The one that's before you is a typical, typical terms that you'd see in mutual aid agreement. It's been vetted by our county attorney's office and also I had a conversation with MCIT this morning to talk to them about the insurance issue and also the mutual aid terms. And the feedback I got from MCIT is that the term. And the feedback I got from MCIT is that the terms that are in this agreement are also very typical terms and follows their model for what they propose that counties use. In reference to the insurance, if any of our equipment is damaged, it will be covered, just like if it were damaged in Benton County. So regardless of whether we, whether we lose some handcuffs or one of our squad cars gets turned over and lit on fire, there's gonna be coverage for that, subject to our deductibles. So, the, the good in the agreement is, again, the indemnification. If we send people down there, the city of Minneapolis is agreeing to indemnify and defend Benton County against claims. So if somebody wants to sue us for something, Minneapolis PD, Minneapolis has to defend that, they have to pay for that, and they're saying that Benton County is left out of that. That circumvents people from suing everybody under the sun, their suit has to go to the Minneapolis Police Department. We also are getting reimbursed for overtime after the first eight hours and for lodging that we might incur for our folks that go down there. As was pointed out, again, we do have the responsibility for any, any damage, but that's covered by MCIT. And we reserve the right to recall our staff at any time. In talking with my administrative staff and specifically my patrol captain about what this might look like, in all likelihood, we're probably talking three, maybe four deputies, depending upon, again, what the local threat picture looks like here. I wanna assure all of you and everyone in the audience and everyone listening that keeping Benton County safe is both our mission statement and our first priority. And whenever we decide how we're going to allocate our resources, that is first and foremost in our mind. We have to make sure we have sufficient people here so that if things do go sideways locally, which I would agree there's, in, in today's world, there's a definite possibility for that. We have the resources not only to protect Benton County, but also to help out St. Cloud like we did in the incident that Mike mentioned. Our folks were there from the, the first night, all the way through the end of it, assisting St. Cloud PD in making sure that order was maintained. So, I'm sure some people might be wondering why we wanna send resources to Minneapolis. Well, it's certainly not motivated by any, any affinity I have for the political leaders in Minneapolis. I can't argue with any of the comments that were made previously. I believe that the leaders of Minneapolis had a moment in time where they could have served as a calming force and led a positive effort to reform and work with the good people in the Minneapolis Police Department and change the things that needed to be changed. Instead, they chose to engage in rhetoric that poured gasoline on this fire and made a very bad situation much worse. I believe that to this day, they continue to trade their public safety responsibilities for the opportunity to promote their misguided agenda at the cost of sowing the seeds of chaos and anarchy that will no doubt grow into the weeds of crime that's destined to infest that city for years to come. Mike mentioned Sheriff Stewart's comments. I can't argue with Sheriff Stewart's comments either. I don't have the appetite to send my folks into a, a war zone, basically, in Minneapolis and try to reclaim it. And I think that's what we're trying to prevent here. I would note that in conversations I've had with Sheriff Stewart, he too intends to send people down to help Hennepin County protect their assets. And that is likely what we would be doing with our folks as well, is that primarily we'd want them to assist Hennepin County in protecting the assets they have down there. So in spite of the poor leadership, as was mentioned previously, I believe there are good men in the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office and the Minneapolis Police Department who work each day and each night to keep their communities safe. The Minnesota sheriffs take pride in living the motto, no sheriff stands alone. What that's meant over the years for Benton County is that we've benefited from resources of these larger counties that have sent, sent them here with only a phone call. They've brought us things and people that we could never afford in Benton County that we desperately needed. And right now, Hennepin County needs our help. Hennepin County and Minneapolis need our help to protect their jail, to protect their courthouse, protect their other municipal buildings, and to ensure the peace is maintained. I know it's tempting to look at the situation and decide that we're gonna turn away from this challenge and let the natural consequences of poor leadership be carried out in Minneapolis. My concern is that doing so increases the likelihood that law enforcement officers and citizens are gonna suffer. They're gonna be assaulted and harmed, that property's gonna be damaged, and that those who wish to sow these seeds of chaos are gonna be emboldened by whatever victories they see happening down there. If we turn from this challenge and allow criminals to once again gain control of Minneapolis streets, I wonder how long it will be before our area falls into the crosshairs? How long before we're targeted by this mob? If that would come to pass, who are we gonna call when our local resources are overwhelmed? For the good of both the people of Minneapolis and Minnesota, I believe that it's critical that those who choose to engage in this criminal behavior, regardless of their motivation, understand that there are consequences for this criminal behavior and it won't be tolerated, whether that's on the streets of Minneapolis, or the streets of St. Cloud, or the streets of Benton County. I'm prepared to stand at this critical moment in time for public safety, 'cause I believe the implications of what is about to occur in Minneapolis extend far beyond the streets of Minneapolis. And with that, I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Okay, is there any questions from Commissioners?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm just gonna have to let you know I have to abstain from this, from personal issues.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sheriff, I don't think you're gonna find a bigger supporter of law enforcement than me. My frustration lies with what some of the individuals settled there is they're defunding the police down there, and we could be sending individuals down that could be family, friends, and everything of ours. You work with them every day. I have a real problem with that, especially with them not gonna pay the whole freight, as, as you guys called it. It's a dangerous fluid situation. What happens when, or if one of our officers does something wrong down there and they're wearing a Benton County badge or something like that? Then pretty soon we got rioting at Benton County. We're on the hook for that bill as well, I think, if they start doing damage here.
Certainly, yes, if, if anyone causes damage here, our, we, Benton County would be insured for that damage and we'd handle it like any other situation. I can't argue with any of the things anyone says about the reservations, I have deep reservations about this as well. With that said, again, I think the greater good calls us to assist Minneapolis and Hennepin County in their time of need. I don't have a no-risk solution for you. There is risk here, there's no doubt about that. The only, the reason I bring it forward and the reason I think it's the right thing to do is because I believe the, the risk is worth what we have at stake here.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sheriff Heck, you talked before about deductibles that would need to be met. Do you know what those deductibles are off the top of your head, or maybe Monty would?
It's $1,000 per vehicle.
$1,000?
$1,000 per vehicle, yeah.
And also Sheriff Heck, any, there was a comment about the late coming of this contract, not to this, this board, but apparently to your office too, can you speak to that at all?
I too would have liked to seen something sooner. Having more time to work this out is always better. I will say, we anticipate deploying officers likely around the end of March or early April. The timing of the trial is about two weeks to begin jury selection. It's anticipated that's gonna take two to three weeks. And then they're anticipating probably two to three weeks for a trial. So a jury verdict is probably six to eight weeks away.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes. How many other surrounding counties are supporting this and sending support?
I haven't, I haven't asked my, my fellow sheriffs directly. I see in the media Sheriff Soika made comments that they're considering it. I did see in the media that Sheriff Brott is not sending people. Those are probably the only two that I can actually answer for, as far as what they're definitely gonna do.
Okay, I can make comment on that. I talked to Sherburne County Commissioner this morning, and it is not on their agenda today. They have nothing on their agenda for that. Do you have any comments, Beth, before I say something?
You can go first.
Okay. One thing I, I, the situation, I had several calls on this in the last 36 hours. This is, I don't think this is a normal situation where we provide mutual aid. This is something that's been brewing for quite some time. You know, and, and the overtime and the lodging is very minor to me that they'll provide that. I don't believe that the comments that were made by the Minneapolis City Council members, the Minneapolis Police Department, and Hennepin County helped anything in this situation. You know, and especially the city council. If, if us five people, or your previous five people, went out and made those comments, you know, defund the sheriff's department, I wouldn't expect help from anybody else. Do I, do I like the mutual aid agreement? Absolutely. You know, I, I've seen it from when I was on other boards for fire departments and all that, I think it's good. But I don't think this is a normal situation where mutual aid really applies. I think this is an outcry for somebody that has destroyed a, a police department and stuff like that, that, you know, they're looking for help. And I think they have, you know, multiple sources between the state troopers and the highway department. And the long-term consequences I'm concerned about is if one of our, our deputies get hurt or somebody gets hurt and we're on workman's comp at a long period of time. You know, Sheriff, as well as I do, that we've worked hard to bring our workman's comp in order in the last few years. And a couple incidents like this could, could put us right back to where we were, say, five or six years ago when our workman's comp fees. So, that's a couple of comments that I have. I, I just, I don't know. And the other part is the, the, probably the shortness of time to comprehend this is a little bit, you know, doesn't sit well with me. So, is there any other comments before I? And I guess at this point, if anybody, the, the three people that are here to comment, I would accept a comment from you. We can do that at this time, if you wish or if you don't wish.
I will.
Okay, Mike. And, you know, we don't wanna go on and on, but...
Right, right.
You know, I know all three of you have experience in law enforcement.
Michael Deppa, address 12831 85th Avenue Northeast in Foley, Minnesota. I believe, you know, my belief and I've been involved with SORT team. SORT team in the Department of Corrections is a special operations that they respond to certain emergencies like this type of crisis. I believe that they are highly trained in that. Maybe I'm not gonna say law enforcement isn't, but they have SORT teams that are put together from each correctional facility that are special members. There might be up to 12 response members for each crisis, and those members trained drastically just for this type of situation that's gonna occur in this trial. And I also believe that the National Guard is more trained in taking care of crowd control and that. And that's just my knowledge with that, that I think they need to send the best-trained people that take care of riot control situations. And they are out there, they can reach out. Governor Walz could reach out to the correctional facilities who have these special operations where they do train. They train monthly or they train quarterly, and I believe the National Guard does that as well. So, that's another option that they have, I believe, that you guys don't, maybe don't know or aren't aware of, you know? So, that's my comments with that.
All right, hey, thank you for that. Mr. Chair. Yes. Mike, I, I appreciate your, your comments there. As sitting on the Emergency Management Policy Committee, I know that the Corrections Department is way underfunded as well, so it'd be another, another way of trying to fund those people. But you're right, there, there is those groups within the Corrections area. I just, I sit back and, and I really struggle with this because Sheriff Heck, I, 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 as you, you know, am on the fire department, we live by mutual aid agreements. I just have a real problem with defending people that have no respect for law and order. And, you know, they, they do, they already got the National Guard called up, they've got State Patrol, and I, I, I've got family that's State Patrol and they're wore out, they've been there for almost a year. So I get it, it, this is a real, real tough one for me. I also sit on the Emergency Policy Committee, and there's policy language being, trying to be put through right now that relates directly to mutual aid agreements. And one of fellow Commissioners from a neighboring county brought up that this reads exactly what's trying to be done for the city of Minneapolis right now. And I can tell you that the support of that policy board was, I, I never heard one in favor of it. So I, I applaud what you guys are trying to do and stand up, and, and I, I get the no sheriff stands alone. But when you got millions of people, or a million of people not supporting, or the majority not supporting, that puts you and your family and friends and, and colleagues in, in great danger. And, and the county of Benton, so I guess we'll have to see where it goes.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes.
Sheriff, I, I wanna start out, first of all, thank you, thank your department. I totally respect you as our sheriff, I respect our department, our deputies. My feelings also echoing my other members here. I think part of the, part of my particular issue too, as Commissioner Pop talked about, was the late coming of this contract. For myself, I hear about this Friday on WJON, I get my board packet Friday, and that's where the mutual aid agreement is. And so, for me, it's being able to digest this, first of all. These people speak from their, their knowledge of mutual aid, mutual aid agreements, makes perfect sense to me, but I don't have an appetite either of sending Benton County to downtown Minneapolis. And that's just how I feel.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chair. I got one more. Obviously, I've got firsthand knowledge of basically some poor judgment or something, not meaning no harm, but it, some things that, that can happen down there will travel back here and affect a department, whether they like it or not. And that, that's affected a, a department that I've been involved with for many years. So, you know, there was, wasn't, you know, no intention or anything like that. It just, everybody gets caught up in the moment and, and sometimes cooler heads don't prevail.
Okay, anybody else?
We know this has been coming for a long time, and I believe our state should be working with the area to make sure that prevention, instead of waiting until the chaos starts, but to be ready for what's gonna come. And putting our people in harm's way without the specific training that these other people have had, I think is a liability.
Okay, you got any comments, Troy?
Well, to the training, our folks have been trained in mobile field force training. If you watched any of the coverage in May of the law enforcement working to control the situation, some of those movements, those formations, our folks have that training. Our folks have the equipment that we need to make sure that they're safe out there. So from that standpoint, I'm confident that we have staff that would be adequate for the job that was asked of them. I, I completely understand the reservations that all of you have. As I said, I, I have those reservations as well. The one thing I will share with you, I believe if you wish to have more time to weigh this, we could certainly revisit this in two weeks. As I said, we don't anticipate having to deploy until very end of March, early April. And the other thing that weighs on my mind is, you know, even as late as last night when I was corresponding with one of the commanders in Minneapolis, they were still looking for more bodies to fill out the ranks that they need to carry this plan out. So, the, the idea that there's somebody else that can fill this void, I, I don't know that that's an option for them. But I will.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chair, I, I would personally like to have more time to find out if our neighboring communities are gonna support, 'cause I would... because I would not want to be one that, huh, i- in my opinion, if the five neighboring counties don't, if they support and we're the only ones, that could affect our mutual aid agreements when we need help.
Okay.
I would like to have a little bit more time to research this.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll ask what your wishes are at this point in time?
I would move to push this to, uh, our next, uh, regular scheduled.
I think it's February sixteenth meeting?
March sixteenth.
March sixteenth, excuse me? Is that, um, suitable with anybody else, or, or do you want to act on it now, or what's? Do we, do we need a motion to move it, uh? Monte, do we need a mo-
Do you wish to table it?
We can table it.
I'll make a motion to table it till next.
Okay. I got a motion on the floor for tabling it till March sixteenth, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, we've got a second, a, a motion and a second for tabling it to March sixteenth? Any further discussion? Otherwise, I'll call the question and, uh, because Commissioner Heinon abstained, why don't you call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Abstain, abstain.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, um, look further on to the sixteenth, and maybe see what our neighboring counties does. Um, I don't know if it'll change anything or not by then.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, I, I appreciate the consideration, I appreciate all the comments. Um, I think we share the same concerns. And if it please the board, I'll reach out to our area law enforcement partners and find out what their plans are and bring that back on the sixteenth.
And I, I think, maybe by then we'll have a better handle on what the state is gonna do as far as the National Guard and state patrols and so- some of that other things.
Very good.
You know, I know mutual aid is a, a good deal, but in this case, I don't know.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
So now we'll go back to, uh, County Administrator Monte Hedley.
Yeah, Amanda's here with the EP's next round of recommendations.
Good morning, um, Sheriff Pop and, and County Commissioners.
Good morning.
Trying to lighten the mood a little bit. We have some money to give away, um, as far as the Business Relief Fund, um, goes. And, um, you have round two in your packets this morning. And round two consists of, um, a total of, um, let's see, um, so we, so, as you know, the Grant Committee, so the BEP Grant Committee, uh, met last week to discuss the additional allocation. That was based on, um, profit and loss comparisons during the month of November and December of twenty nineteen in comparison to, um, November and December of twenty twenty. The applicants and identified in the spread have, have experienced some significant losses um, during the comparative months, um, as we reviewed those applications and those profit and loss statements. The group, our group has made, um, as many businesses whole as they could in round one. And, um, then again, on your spread, you'll see some, um, businesses haven't, um, didn't receive the full allocation of the fourteen thousand, um, dollars. But, uh, we tried to make them as whole as they, as we could, uh, knowing what their losses were in those comparative months. As you will see that in the spreadsheet, some of, some of those businesses resulted in additional zero allocation um, during this round. And the businesses that experienced, um, significant losses re- received those additional allocations. So, um, just kind of breaking down our math in the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, um, the total amount that we have, um, to expend in the Business Relief Grant Program is seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. In round one, which was just a couple of weeks ago, the County Board approved allocations, um, to forty-three businesses in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Which means we had, um, a total allocation of four hundred and twenty-one dol- uh, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six cents left over, um, to figure out how we are going to distribute among the businesses that have already applied. We include one, uh, late submission, um, that we received all the documentation from. We, of course, we had three late submissions, which, um, the County Board included in the total, um, grant number. But, um, one of those businesses, we actually received all of the documentation from, and the other two, we did not. So, we did not, we did not include those into your list, okay? So, we included, uh, Lincoln Radiator into, um, the round two submission. And, um, so we'll allocate ten thousand dollars to them as well, as we were hoping to anyway, because they have all their documentation in. So, with that, um, including Lincoln Radiator and the businesses that we've made whole as much as we could possibly, um, through their P and L statements, we, uh, we took off, uh, you know, you could take off four hun- forty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents. So, that's including the businesses that we made whole that were, um, their profit and loss statements were less than ten thousand, and, um, adding Lincoln Radiator into that. So, of that, we had three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifteen, um, dollars and ninety-five cents left to expend among the remaining applicants. And so then we divided that up equally among all of the, um, applicants that are on your list. And you will see that, um, of the twenty-seven applicants that received fourteen thousand, forty-five dollars and three cents, those ac- applicants actually had losses greater than that fourteen thousand dollars. And they, and very significant losses, actually. So, a couple, well, one of the things that I wanted to note, and I may, I may have mentioned this at the last meeting, but, um, when you total up all of the applicants' losses of revenue over the months of November and December, it totaled just about four million dollars. And tho- those were just so, in two months in comparison period. So, it is, um, quite a significant amount of loss our businesses in Benton County have, have seen or experienced in the last two months. So, with that list that you have in front of you, part of our compliance is, um, to request, uh, each of the applicants to submit receipts and documentation, um, through a compliance form verifying that the expenditures, that they are suggesting in their application are the, indeed the expenditures that they're going to be spending this money on. And so they, they will need to submit a compliance form and documentation in the form of receipts or, um, invoices of some sort. So, so we are doing compliance, even though, um, it's not necessarily required. We just, we want to make sure that, um, we're doing our due diligence, making sure that the county money that, um, is being expended, we are complying with, um, any audit requests that we may get in the future. And I'll open it up to questions that you have, um, for me, and, um, be happy to answer them.
Questions for Amanda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Amanda, so what do we have left over to spend? Is that four hundred and twenty-one thousand?
The four hundred and twenty-one thousand, um.
And, and that's after going with the recommendation of fourteen, an average of fourteen thousand per applicant?
No, no.
No, 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 um, so, uh, we had a total amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And then in our first round, um, we expended, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven, which leaves us with four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twelve rounding. So, when we spread that amount across all of the applicants that are in your list here, there's, I believe there's twenty-seven of them, we evenly divide those out, um, among those applicants. Other than the ones that were, y- you'll see some amounts, um, that are less than the fourteen thousand. We're trying to make those whole based on the sales data, um, or the, the total sales receipts, um, from November, in comparison, in those comparison months, from November, December of nineteen and twenty. So, we, um, look at the loss of revenue. And then, um, those smaller numbers that you see in your spreadsheet, those are making those businesses whole for those two months. And then everything else, um, so the fourteen thousand, um, dollar amount is, those businesses have experienced losses greater than fourteen thousand dollars, if that makes sense.
Yep. Any other questions? I, I think it's, you look at the percent of decrease in sales, pretty much tells you where some of these have been.
Yep.
So, any other questions for Amanda? Otherwise, we need a action on this.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the second round of these dollars to be expended and to also include the, uh, compliance checks that Amanda talked about.
I'll second.
So, motion's been made in second it to approve these. Um, any other discussion before we call her on?
Great job, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Um, otherwise, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks Amanda for everything you've done for Benton County.
Absolutely, thank you.
Should we spell your name correctly for that parking sign?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make sure I email you my correct name.
The board already moved on Commissioner Pop's spot.
What?
The board already talked about using Commissioner Pop's.
Yeah, so, I have to give my spot up to you, Amanda. Okay, Monte, I guess.
Yeah, let me see if I can get this, uh, for head to work. If I hit the off button and then turn it back on, that works.
No, that's what we do at home. Not at the county. We got IT Steve here.
There we go. Okay. So, the first item is, uh, proposed revisions to our public health emergency temporary personnel policies. So, these policies were first adopted back in March, just almost a year ago, and, uh, to address some unique circumstances associated with our, uh, the pandemic and, and our response to it. And you see a collection of, of, of a few policies contained, uh, in the attachment. One of those was adopted more recently, it was adopted in May. And, uh, it's item number three, which begins on page three. And back then, we were hearing that, uh, primarily folks in public health were putting in extraordinary amounts of time. And these folks were exempt, meaning they're not paid cash overtime or time and a half. And there was a request that they'd be allowed to exceed the normal forty-hour cap on comp time because, again, all the demands being placed upon them, uh, because of our pandemic response. Uh, recently, I took a look at, at, um, the balances of folks who had comp time. Turns out that most of the po- folks who had actually exceeded this were not in public health. They were in other departments, other units in, in Human Services. So, the, the policy was kind of missing the mark. And, uh, I don't think it intended really to address those folks. And in some instances, that extra, those extra hours weren't really related to our pandemic response. It was just, they, these folks put in quite a lot of extra time. So, discussed this recently at the management team meeting. And, uh, my initial thought was just, maybe we should just rescind the policy entirely and, and just end it. And, uh, some, a request came from Human Services to, well, could we continue allowing it for those folks that are assisting with the vaccination clinics? And that, again, is primarily public health. But I understand there are also some other folks in Human Services that are assisting with the vaccination clinics. So, what I, I'm bringing for you to today is, is a revision to the policy that begins on page four. You can see at the top, uh, the new, the new stuff is underlined and removing old things is a strike through. So, basically says if you're assisting with the COVID vaci- vaccination clinics, uh, you would be exempt from the forty-hour cap on comp time. Again, the provision is that you must be involved and provide direct assistance to the COVID vaccination clinics. And it only applies to those hours spent assisting with a vaccination clinic. So, trying to tighten this up, where it's just related to those vaccination clinics and not, not everything. And, uh, one thing, I know there's been some questions from, from employees who've gone over the max and is, well, when this policy goes away, am I gonna lose all that extra time? And, and I wanted to make that clear here in this policy, is no, you wouldn't. You know, when the policy ends, you could no longer continue going over forty, but if you've got some hours over forty, you wouldn't lose them. You'd still get to use them at some point. So, that's, that's the recommendation, Mr. Chair. And we discussed it at the recent management team meeting, and it seemed to be acceptable to most folks, so.
Okay. Questions? Any questions? This is an action item?
Yes, it is, I'll make the motion to approve the revised public health emergency temporary personnel policy as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second it to approve the revised version. Any other discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried.
Alrighty, I think my next item was the amended, I, it, so the, um, airport, St. Cloud Region Airport Advisory Committee recently had its first meeting. I'm sorry, I gotta back up, I get these terms confused. There is an ad hoc committee which exists, that has existed for quite a long time that's been discussing, uh, the creation of this, the St. Cloud Airport Authority. And that is the county administrators from the three counties, folks from the city, uh, St. Cloud, and also county commission representatives from each of the three counties. As you know, the Airport Authority is now forming. Uh, one thing that remained, though, was, uh, was to appoint a ninth at-large member. So, each of the four entities could appoint two, so that gets you eight. And then those eight then had, I'm sorry, those, those member counties and cities had to choose the ninth at-large. And on the twenty-fifth, the ad hoc committee had a discussion. And, and there were quite a few names that were, were, were discussed. And the consensus of the ad hoc committee was, uh, a person named Angela Olson, who was a resident of Sherburne County. A little bit, I, I include a little bit of her, uh, background here in, um, the gen, I am an aviation planner with Boldig Engineering. Thirty years of aviation experience as an instructor, commercial and charter pilot, associate professor of aviation, uh, doctorate in higher ed, and an undergraduate and graduate degrees in St. Cloud State and the University of North Dakota. She's seen, this person seemed extremely qualified for this role, and I think, um, the ad hoc committee seemed very comfortable with making this appointment. So, it's, it's, what we're, our ask for you all is just to simply to affirm, uh, that appointment of Angela as the now at-large member, and Commissioner Heinon, do you think you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so I sat on this committee, uh, and we first started out just going over all of the people that were looked at. And then all of a sudden, it kind of got to be one-sided. And somebody approached and said, what are we missing here? What are we missing? So, everybody went through all their, uh, appointments of what their backgrounds were. And truly what we were missing is this lady with her background. And as soon as everyone brought that, was brought to her attention, it was kind of a no-brainer. You know, this is exactly the person they were missing out of those eight people with the background she has. And they felt it very strongly that it was needed, so we all approved her.
Okay.
I think they also saw some value in geographical and diversity.
Correct.
In the board, so that, I think this person brought that to the table, yeah.
Any other comments or discussions? I guess my only comment would be to this is that, uh, Sherburne County, probably the northern half, is all that really is gonna use this airport or be part of it, and now we have three people from Sherburne County on this board, I guess that would be mine. I don't argue with her comment, with her qualifications or anything like that. I guess that would be my only comment, it's, it's very close to Benton County. You know, right next to the Benton, Mars, or Benton, Sherburne County line. So, um, that would be my only reservation on this.
Mr. Chair, speaking with the commis- Mr. Chair, speaking with the commis- Commissioner Foley, Lisa Foley. You know, we, we shared some information and some concerns about a lot of things too about this. But we all did feel that this person fit what we needed. Because, you know, even, even us, uh, the other two people we had as alternates didn't have the, the background that was looked, looked for. You know, St. Cloud didn't have anybody with this type of a background. So I'm real comfortable with this, very comfortable with this.
So we don't need?
Just a motion if you could and to affirm that appointment, that'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Angelie Olson to the St. Cloud Regional Airport Advisory Committee.
Second. Motion's been made in second it, is this um a motion to appoint or a motion to support the appointment?
Support.
Okay.
Cause she's been, she's been appointed, but we, all the jurisdictions have to make it legal.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you. Alrighty, I guess that takes us right into the administrative report. Uh, the first thing is the monthly financial report. So this is the end of, end of the year, which I thought might be a little more important to review, review a few things. I know we're kind of behind schedule, so I'll, I'll move kind of quickly. So we're like even more farther behind schedule. Lots of numbers, lots of small numbers. Probably, you know, one thing I wanted to just highlight is um. This would be page two, and I highlight up here on your screen a couple of numbers of. So in our general revenue fund, you can see we ended the year with revenues exceeding expenditures by two million four hundred eighty seven thousand. And that's, that's because of the CERS funding. That's the CERS funding. We, again, we received almost five million. Uh, a lot of that was of course distributed in terms of grants to businesses, nonprofits, but a fair amount was, was retained internally by the county. So that explains why we have that significant excess and those dollars remain in our fund balance. One thing I want to point out, you could definitely see the effect of the pandemic up above is sheriff's boarding revenue. We had projected three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of, of revenue. Our ultimate collections were a hundred and ten thousand, so what, two hundred and sixty thousand below what our expectations were. So of course, you know, the jails kind of emptied out and, and no one was sending inmates to, for our jail to be boarded. So that revenue went down substantially. So I just want to point out those two things uh and explain that significant excess of, of revenues over expenditures against its primary of the CERS funding. So I tried to footnote lots of things, hopefully those answered most of your questions. Another thing at last we want to, will highlight was our, this is our self insurance, uh, self insurance fund. And this is one we watch very closely, especially we watch very closely our, our, our reserve balance. And as you can see in the bottom right hand side of this, this page, it's page seven of this handout. We're right about where we need to be in terms of our, our reserve target. Our reserve target is six months of expenditures, uh, and that'd be about one point two seven six million. We're at one point two eight million. So we're right on target where we need to be in terms of uh, in terms of uh a reserve balance in the self insurance fund. One other thing I wanted to kind of highlight of, you know, we talked about having that, that, that eight percent increase in this year and then next year. And it's been driven by reinsurance and, and I think this highlights this so well. You can see, for example, uh, we received one point four million in reinsurance reimbursement in two thousand twenty, one point four million. But down below on this administrative line says P one admin fees, stop loss reinsurance. Six hundred and forty six thousand. About five hundred thousand of that is our reinsurance premium. So we paid out five hundred thousand in reinsurance, but we got one point four million back in reimbursement. So the reinsurance, the reinsurance carrier lost a lot of money on us. So that's why we're seeing us, reinsurance premiums going up quite a bit. They, they, they lost a lot, so. Kind of explains that issue. Any questions on the monthly financial report? Happy to answer anything you've got. I kind of skipped over a few pages.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Monty, just to go back to the two point four million that's still sitting there.
Yeah.
Has any of that been restricted for anything? Did prior board restrict any of those dollars?
No, it's unrestricted, and the board can choose how it's expended, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. Next was uh, kind of jumping back to airport authority. Wanted to um. And hope that Commissioner Heine can chime in on these issues. I put up here on this, this screen, the names of the eight, eight folks who are the, are the founding members of the airport advisory committee, which will then become the regional airport authority in, in about a year. So you see John Quady from Knife River, Mayor Kurt Hunstiger uh from Stock Rapids. King Bannon, who's the dean of SCSU Department of Public Administration. Ryan Daniel, the CEO of Metro Bus. Jamie Bestkin, a St. Cloud State, St. Cloud State Marketing Professor. Brian Myers, the current GSDC Chair. Marshall Graham's is an Air National Guard helicopter pilot and a financial advisor. David, and I don't, I'm sure I won't pronounce his name correctly, Ware Is, a corporate pilot for Miller Marine and was the US Airways commercial pilot. I think you can see uh from this listing, a lot of extremely well qualified individuals who've been appointed to this airport commission. Uh, and I think that, that really bodes well for the future of the airport. Uh, this opportunity has attracted some, some incredible talent, I think, which can help guide the airport in the future, so. And of course, then you just added Angela Olson just recently. So um, yeah, they had their first organization meeting last week and uh that kind of kicks things off. And uh I don't know at this point the frequency of future meetings, but they want to start to involve this group in this planning and transition. Uh, educating them about how the airport runs and so on. Uh, so it seems like again, they're off to a good start.
Yeah, so they're going to start meeting monthly. Bill is going to be giving them all the information.
Yeah.
And then at first, they're just going to uh. Be an advisory board for St. Cloud until the FCA, FCA kicks in, FFCA kicks in.
FAA?
Yeah, to approve, to approve it.
Right, the, the St. Cloud Airport's going to provide staff support to this authority as it's forming. At some point though, the authority will hire its own executive director and its own staff. So there's a lot of sort of complex transitional issues that they got to work out between the city and the authority. In terms of support, employees, assets, leases and so on. It's, yeah, it's a complex process.
I'm assuming uh it'll be approved in about a year, I think they were saying.
That's the goal, yeah, about a year. It sounds like the city of St. Cloud is going to hire a consultant to assist with this effort.
Yes, correct.
Help navigate the FAA hoops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is uh Sherburne County Administrator still?
Bruce?
Bruce still advising or doing anything?
Well, he'll be out, we'll, go ahead, Monty.
You know, my impression is that they're really trying to turn this sort of support over to St. Cloud Airport and Bill. And kind of Bruce kind of stepped back now. So that was my impression. It was somewhat deliberate kind of handoff to say, okay, you know, the spokes from St. Cloud Airport, you can support it or St. Cloud can.
Okay.
So actually, uh, the first hour of meeting, we were all done. We've already got rid of the, our board.
That's right, the ad hoc committee was fired at that.
Yeah, we were fired, literally fired. You know, so then the next two hour meeting was basically Bill and all the appointees and talking about how they're going to proceed forward. And at that point in time, we step back, we've got nothing to do with it anymore.
Right.
As of now, the ad hoc committee?
As of now, we're done.
Right, there was an acknowledgement that the work of the ad hoc committee has completed. Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Questions, thoughts about airport authority?
What's been going on for a long time?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Okay. Uh, let's see, moving on, Foley wastewater project, fiber connection to St. Cloud. Of course, as you know, the city of Foley received uh bonding fund, bond funding to assist with installing a wastewater line between Foley and the city of St. Cloud. Uh, the, the city of Foley has brought up the idea of, of installing fiber conduit uh in this route. To provide a higher speed fiber service to businesses in Foley and beyond potentially. So the city has asked uh us if we're interested in participating financially in the cost to install this conduit. I'm told by the city of Foley, the cost is about a hundred and fifty thousand. We've not independently verified that cost. I'd like the opportunity to do that. This is what the city has told us that they believe the cost will be. So there, I'm not asking for an answer today. We're asking lots of questions, trying to dig into, you know, would this be beneficial for Benton County to be a participant in this? One of the interests that we have possibly is connecting our network here in Foley to our East St. Cloud facility. Cause right now, we're paying about a thousand dollars a month for commercial internet service to the East St. Cloud facility. So if we were to connect directly, that cost would go away. Now, there would be some, the, the, the biggest cost would be of course the upfront costs to get connected in East St. Cloud, get connected here and of course in the conduit in between. So uh those, we're attempting to quantify now, what would those costs be? I think we've established generally, working with Steve, it's technically feasible to connect, we think we can. So now we're just trying to understand what the costs are and, and how does that work?
I guess knowing our IT department, I would put a lot of faith in them.
You know, there are other issues we need to explore with our county attorney, like for example, the conduit would run in Mendat right of way. Would we own it? Would we control it? Issues like that. The, the actual possibility is that RVIG would actually install the fiber. So it would be taxpayer funded conduit, but if a private entity installing fiber in it, how does that work? Would there have to be some kind of lease agreement and so on? Would there have to be a competitive process to see who gets to put their fiber in this? Those are issues that we're trying to explore.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Chair.
Quite a few questions still.
Monty, on, on the, you said a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Is what the number is or what they're estimated? Where's that connecting from? Is, is it like uh on the corner ninety five or is it going all the way in?
Yeah, so I understand that the conduit would start about where Minnesota Truck Headquarters is, follow Highway twenty three. It would at some point branch off and follow county roads and township roads into Foley. It would come into Foley over by Snap Fitness. That's where we come into town, is right there.
And they're, they're thinking that's a hundred and fifty thousand?
See, I, I, yes.
I think we better look into those numbers a little bit more.
I need to independently verify that.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, just for the board members here, the previous boards were looking for ideas of how to start laying fiber optics in the ground. Especially when we're going to reconstruct new roads. Especially with what we're seeing with the pandemic. I'm having a moment here of earlier, but uh, so this is another step in the right direction to help our residents, rural residents. And then we can tie off of this in the future. So in my opinion, of course, Chris would probably say differently, but.
Chris?
Since you, since I got mentioned, I'll just add, so I think that's a great idea. We, this, this pandemic has highlighted some challenges with rural internet access with a lot of people that working from homes, schools. I did, I just want to caution though, you know, once it's in the ground, it's not a zero cost thing.
Right.
One thing that comes to mind is, you know, we already have fiber optic lines from downtown Foley out to our building. And we are a utility owner at that point. And then we're subject to all the utility owner statutes that require locates. Any streetlights, uh, traffic in the lights, storm sewers are considered uh utilities. We have a legal obligation that whenever an excavator puts in an excavator ticket, we have to go out and locate that. So that's staff time, um, liability, things like that, if we locate it incorrectly and then that gets damaged or hit and stuff. So those are just some things I think we should consider going forward that we need to address and maybe identify some resources just to manage that on a day to day and year end uh basis. So that's just what I wanted to add.
I, I guess I would make Amanda's job a little easier when she's selling Benton County if some of this was happening, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, that would be my comment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I know legislators are looking to add more money into the broadband fund too.
Right.
So.
Lot more.
We've been pushing this for quite a few years.
Yeah.
And it's come to the point where we know we need it.
Right.
We understand we need it. It's another step in the right direction of moving forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think uh, this is a little bit of my field. Uh, I, I do believe that there could be a partnership, uh, whether that's bid out um between ISP providers or something like that to share in the cost. Because they could actually take that over, take some of the liability off of us. But we in turn get a leaseback rate.
Yeah.
Of uh, you know, free or minimal cost for many years to come um with us, without supporting their, their uh.
Sure. Yeah.
Venture.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd agree with you, Commissioner Pop, that, that corridor between Foley and St. Cloud is crucial. And if we can get that in there to help the rural areas also down the road, that would be.
Yeah.
Big benefit.
Michael, this morning, we just to share with you, you know, that we're having these conversations with Foley and RVIG and the city of St. Cloud. And just, we have lots of questions to answer and, and we'll bring back more information to you later.
And as, as they go forward to start this project, there's going to have to be some decisions made, I take it?
Absolutely, you bet, yeah. Decisions about whether you'll participate financially, possibly lease agreements with the, with the fiber provider, et cetera, et cetera, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for the update on that.
You bet. Okay. Uh, class and comp. So the appeal process has, has closed as of Friday. Tessa tells me she has appeals from um. There's twenty six employees who've been appealed. And so she's going to be working through those appeals over the next few weeks. And um if, if, if she, if she is unable to resolve appeals, it's been made known to employees that they can then appeal to the county board. So hopefully, most of those will get resolved at Tessa's level. And we won't ask you to consider many, uh, but that could occur though, is we may have to ask you all to consider some appeals. I don't have a time frame for you that, but um that could occur.
Okay.
So um. Then once the appeal, the appeals are all resolved, then at some point we'll ask the county board to formally adopt a new wage table and uh consider a strategy for implementation. And then we can begin those discussions with each of our bargain units, so. That's probably two to three months away. Okay, let's see here. Employees vaccinated, I, I thought about it, it's interesting to, to share uh our, our vaccination, what's occurring with employees. I don't have numbers for you in terms of how many have or have not chosen not to. Uh, I understand from Sheriff Heck that um all the licensed staff have been given the opportunity to receive a vaccination. So obviously the patrol deputies and patrol sergeants, so, and so on, uh, the detectives and those folks, anyone who's licensed. They have received the, they've had the opportunity to get their, their second shot as well. All the detention, the jail staff has also been given two opportunities to receive a vaccine. He tells us that uh of those who did elect to have it, they've received their first, first dose and are waiting then for the second. And he says, uh, some also, some dispatch staff have also received the vaccination. In human services, uh, I'm told by Samantha that uh public health staff have received the vaccination as well as some human service employees who've, who've participated in the vaccination clinics. Again, so, so no numbers in terms of how many or how many have chosen not to. And I think that's somewhat deliberate, you know, I don't think there's, no one wants to put any pressure, sort of like put a spotlight on, well, okay, why did you not get the vaccination and so on and so forth? And somewhat preserving the privacy of those employees, so I don't have, again, don't have numbers for you. You know, I'm hoping at some point we can offer vaccination clinics here to employees on site as the vaccination becomes more widely available. We've done flu clinic shots and flu shot clinics in the past. It, it would be nice for convenience of employees if we could offer one here. So it's an issue we're going to explore with Central Care. Park dedication. Whoops. Always seems to be an interesting subject. Park dedication. So you can see about fifty four hundred was collected that went into township buckets in two thousand twenty. And eighteen hundred went into the county, the portion that the county retains. And then you can see the township balances, so there's uh, what, eleven balances there? So you can see that fifty five thousand is spread amongst those eleven townships, the largest being fourteen thousand in Wattab. And um. I guess the, that this illustrates is that, you know, there's certainly not a lot of large. And, um, I guess the il, that this illustrates is that, you know, there's certainly not a lot of large resources coming in for park dedication. And it's kinda scattered in these eleven buckets, so it, it's kinda hard for it to really do a lot of good work when it's so, so dispersed. Um, so, you know, I think at some point, this is where they have a conversation perhaps at a township meeting about would townships be willing to let this, let these resources be turned over to the county and used on a countywide basis? Because otherwise, they're gonna set in this fund forever and ever, and really they're not, they're not working on behalf of anyone. So just a thought for you, uh, for maybe a future township officers meeting is to explore that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Monty, cause we've taken some park dedication funds from some of these, uh, townships already in the past.
That, that is true, right? Uh, if the park was located in the township, that's right, so Watab.
Yep.
Primarily, right, Watab primarily for, for Ben the River.
But we have to remember that we have to have the approval of the township to do that.
If you wanna spin it outside the township, you need their approval. If you're spinning it inside the township, you don't.
Right. We can grab it without?
If you're spinning it inside the township, you do not need the township's consent. That's right.
I don't think that would work very well.
We've sort of discovered that asking probably is a good idea.
Right, yep.
So anyway, any questions, thoughts on park dedication? I will say this is, this has been a very volatile, controversial subject over the years, over not a particularly large amount of money.
Exactly.
You know, it's, it's somewhat been disproportionate to the amount of money that's involved. So, okay. Uh, I think my last, last thing is the, the, the tax rating. This data for this, this table comes from MICA. Actually, it's from, the, the original source of the data is, is the Department of Revenue. And, uh, every year they put out this spreadsheet that says, here's the taxes on a two hundred thousand dollar house. I guess we're seeing effective inflation because of two thousand nineteen, they started expressing in terms of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. So that's why, it looks like, oh my gosh, the taxes are going up a lot, but from years two thousand thirteen through eighteen, it's a two hundred thousand dollar house. And then the last two years is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. So it may be just a kind of, I really wanted to focus though really on the trends. And this is, you can see down here where I've shaded, where Benton County stands relative to the statewide average. So back in two thousand thirteen, we were five hundred dollars above the state average. Fast forward to two thousand twenty, that average has been cut in half. And you can see our ranking statewide, we went from being the sixth highest tax county to the twenty-second. So tremendous progress since two thousand thirteen, uh, of keeping the tax rate down and improving our standard statewide. So just, I think it's important to point out that trend. So I just, I update this every year when the data comes in, it's good to see the progress.
And a lot of that's supplied to you by MICA, I believe, right?
Excuse me?
By, this is supplied to you by MICA.
Yes, sir, that, the original, that spreadsheet comes from MICA, you bet. I know they get the data from the Department of Revenue though, but it does come to us from MICA, you bet.
You know, I, I think that the five fifty-four to two fifty-four is a big improvement and, and that was something that, you know, in two thousand fifteen, we really started working on that you can attract, you can't. Other things, you can't attract businesses, you can't do that if you're ranking very high in the state, so.
You know, one other thing is that I know I didn't include in the spreadsheet, but it's really the, the underlying tax rate. So you go back about ten to twelve years ago, our, our county tax rate was twenty percentage points higher than Stern's. Today, it's only eight percentage points higher.
Right.
We're really closing that gap, so that disparity between us and Stern's has been closed tremendously in ten years.
Yeah, and that's, that's a great thing.
Yeah. Questions? Anything?
These are trends we like to see.
Yep.
These are trends we.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, before we move to human services, we're gonna take a three-minute break. Everybody's back, Will. I'll recess the county board meeting and turn it over to Commissioner Hyden for human services.
At this time, we'll call the human services board meeting to order. Uh, is there any changes to the agenda? Bob?
No, there is not.
Okay. Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We get a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, consent item number one. Looking for an approval.
I'll move approval of consent item number one and only.
Second.
Okay, we get a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Bob? Resolution to accept the two thousand and twenty funds received by donations to cover client needs.
We just have that one item and Peggy is on here to discuss that, so Peggy.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
Every year we receive, uh, we have an anonymous donor and a couple of other donors that, um, give money to the human services to provide services for clients that normally aren't covered, I got these, wait, sorry, or were being federal funding. Um, in two thousand twenty, we, uh, received two thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents. And the money was spent on, um, gifts for the clients, on the children, our wards of the state, they don't have parents on their birthdays. And Christmas come around, we try to give them a little gift, um, some gas cards and bus tickets, and then some independent living skills, which is a variety of items. So we spent out of that, um, donation, two thousand one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents. So we do have a little balance of, of December thirty-first in our donation account.
Mr. Chair, uh, Peggy, I, I realize we're not talking big dollars here, but it, how are, how do you determine how you're spending those dollars? Is there one person, a, a board who determines?
Well, they usually team it up. Most of the dollars are spent by the child protection team or the adult mental health team. And what happens is they bring a request and the worker is working with the family. They see the need and they bring a request to the, um, to their team meetings and then the supervisor approves it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Peggy or Bob about this? Okay, entertain a motion.
So moved. Adopt the resolution of the twenty twenty funds received by donation. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this matter? We'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy and Bob.
So Bob, Bob, you got anything else to add?
Don't have anything more unless you, uh, have any questions for me.
I, I've got some questions, Bob. S- sorry, Chris. Stay seated. Uh, so Bob, at, at, when I was at the AMC conference, you know, virtual, of course, they were talking about, uh, the funding for human services. And I, I was told that it was gonna, some of the funding was gonna be cut by six percent in certain areas. Do you have anything, do you know any more about that, or Peggy?
I do not know myself. I'm watching some of the stuff that comes down. And, uh, if it comes closer to, uh, passing as far as the legislature, then I'll be sure to get that information. But as of right now, I, I don't know. I haven't seen that on, on the information that I get.
Okay, uh, second thing, the vaccinations, are we receiving more in Benton County?
No, actually, we had a slowdown. Uh, the bad weather created a situation where we didn't get a lot of the medication or the vaccines that we thought we were gonna get. So we had a slow week last week and, uh, we borrowed into the second vaccines of this week. So we're trying to get caught back up in that, but I expect that with Johnson and Johnson being, uh, approved. And I, I just read this morning that, uh, their main competitor, Verk, is gonna help them create more of these shots. So I think that pretty soon we should see quite an influx of, of vaccines. But as of right now, we're having a slow week, uh, slow two weeks, but we're hoping that that will ramp back up soon.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for Bob or Peggy? Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll, we'll adjourn the human service, human service board meeting and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Um, at this time, I'll have Chris Bird, county engineer.
All right, uh, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning. My first item today is, uh, to adopt a resolution, uh, accepting the bids of, oh, I have it online here. Of a recent bid opening. On Friday, last Friday, we opened bids for our seasonal gravel crushing, uh, contract. And we were pleasantly surprised again to see that we received several bids, um, just like we did last year. And bids did come in, um, very well. So I need, I think I need to share the screen though, don't I? Okay, so there we go. We received bids from, uh, Brown Excavation, Hard Rock Screening, Ferguson Aggregate and Crushing, J R Ferchi, Hellman Construction, Central Specialties, and W M Scipaniac, uh, for furnishing all the material, labor, and tools necessary to complete the gravel crushing. And what this project is, they will bring their equipment, their crushing into our leased, uh, gravel pit and crush thirty thousand cubic yards of gravel for us this year. Then in turn, we'll use that gravel on maintaining our gravel roads, maintaining gravel shoulders on paved roads. Uh, we'll use that also that crushed gravel, any, um, maintenance projects. If we replace a culvert in a driveway, we'll use that for, uh, surfacing, um, the gravel driveway or its base material underneath our roads. So, um, the bid price of Brown Excavation came in at sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is a unit price of three dollars and twenty-five cents for them, uh, to crush that material. Three dollars and twenty-five cents per cubic yard. Um, so our estimate, uh, oh yeah, this is twenty-nine point five four percent under our estimate, so nearly thirty percent below our estimate.
We'll take it.
Yeah, so, so I'm recommending, uh, adopting this resolution, which would authorize us to enter into a construction contract with Brown Excavating Incorporated.
Mr. Chair, uh, Chris, who was the winner last year?
It was the same contractor, Brown Excavating, so, and consequently at the same unit price.
Correct.
So, uh, that was kinda interesting to see. We don't see any inflation in this material, um, which is good. We're starting to see fuel prices come up. That might have changed if we were opening these bids later in the year. I could say a couple of weeks could make a difference in this bid prices, if fuel prices are creeping up and they're having to factor that into their bid, so.
So with that, what the next question is, is when we sign this contract, can they come back for fuel charge, surcharge?
Nope, nope, uh, this is, uh, our bidding proposal was set up that they give us a price to do all that. Um, and if their costs go up after that, um, they're gonna have to eat that or it'll cut into their, and if any profits they're making, so.
So I'm just looking back many years ago and the fuel and diesel jumped up to four fifty a gallon. You know, pretty soon there was fuel charge.
Fuel, fuel surcharges, when I, I would bet that they have their fuel locked.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Two questions, Chris. Uh, you talked about your leased pit, I assume the one north of Jakeville.
Correct, yep.
Is it Eisenstein?
Yep, correct, yep, that one.
And then also, um, if you need additional yardage from what you were thinking, they honor this, how does that work?
Yeah, so we'll handle it just like we would a construction project. And our bidding proposals, uh, reference a lot of the same specs that our roads, uh, do. So we kinda operate on, uh, adjusting quantities plus or minus twenty-five percent. So if we wanna go a hundred and twenty-five percent, usually we're at the same bid price or under that. Um, usually if we go over a hundred and twenty-five percent, we try to negotiate and say, hey, we're increasing your quantity. Can you give us any break on your unit price?
Okay.
Um, likewise, if we, uh, we're below seventy-five percent of our planned quantity, they come to us and say, you know, we had some fixed costs. We need to increase our unit price. So yeah, usually we've been able to work, when that has happened, um, we've worked with our bidders and been able to keep it at the, the same price.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Um, Chris, do you think being, it came in, you know, substantial dollars less, that it would be in our best interest to go to a hundred and twenty-five percent?
Um, maybe, we can, we can certainly look at that, yeah. Um, and I think we could do that. I just think we, our, our contract with the, the lease owner, um, we have a minimum, uh, quantity that we're supposed to crush every year cause they rely on that income. But I think we, if we crushed up to a hundred and twenty-five percent this year, we would still have, we could still meet our contractual obligations next year. So maybe that's something we'll look at. We, we try to operate our maintenance plan based on thirty thousand, uh, a year. So, um, if we do a hundred and twenty-five percent, we would just stockpile it over the winter and have that available for, for next year then, so.
Okay. Good idea. All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt a resolution to award the construction contract for the twenty twenty-one gravel crushing project to Brown Excavating.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Otherwise, I'll call the roll. All in favor say aye.
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 Posed, carried.
All right, very good. Thank you for that. Um, we'll go to my next item here, which is a presentation. It's just for information, so you can sit back and relax and I'll do my best not to bore you because I will be, uh, talking about a lot of numbers here. I see if I can get this. Going, okay, so I wanna talk to you a little bit about the gas tax distribution. And hopefully my screen is still being shared.
It is, Chris.
Very good. All right, so we'll talk a little bit, uh, about what's known as the H U T D F and how that gets distributed to all the CASA roads. We'll talk a little bit about county roads versus CASA roads. We'll touch a little bit on the needs because that's a lot more information, a lot more formulas and a lot more numbers. And then we'll recap on what we actually received this year, uh, of our gas tax allocation. So the H U T D F, the Highway User Tax Distribution, um, here it is. In Minnesota, we have the benefit of this being established in our state's constitution. So when you hear the term "gas tax" is constitutionally dedicated to roads and bridges, that's what it means. That our constitution says that that can only be used for roads and bridges and it goes into this H U T D F. Oh, minimize that one. Oh, okay, very good. Um, yeah, so into the H U T D F, we have our gas tax, uh, license fees, motor vehicle sales tax. These are the three funding sources that are referenced in the constitution. Down here, this, this fourth item, interest, uh, the sales tax on auto parts and L V S T, which is the leased vehicle sales tax. Those are dedicated by statute and not the constitution. The difference is, well, statutes can change from legislative session to legislative session. So, uh, those are the four main sources where these are kinda locked in. A constitutional change would take a, a vote as a referendum in a general election. So that's why we like, as transportation officials, we like constitutionally dedicated sources because we know that those are reliable year after year and it helps us planning, uh, for projects. So you go into the H U T D F, there's a little bit that gets split off the top that goes to public safety, uh, D and R, um, um, uh, things. Then there's this five percent distribution that goes to the town bridge fund, the town road fund, and what they call the flex highway. Flex highway is for, and this happens more often in metro areas, but it can happen in rural Minnesota too. When a trunk highway gets reconstructed or they, they build a new alignment, a lot of times the old trunk highway gets turned back to the county or the city. And so they use this flex, uh, count to fund repairing that project or paying that local entity to take over that, the highway. And this has been historically underfunded for the amount of road and miles that has been turned back to local agencies. Then the big meat and potatoes part of it is the ninety-five percent di- uh, regular distribution. And these, these formulas or these percentages are locked into the constitution as well. Sixty-two percent of it goes to the trunk highways, the twenty-nine percent of it goes to county state aid roads, and then nine percent to municipal state aid streets. And these are for those cities above five thousand in population, so they get a, a portion of the gas tax, uh, as well. So the motor fuel tax, twenty-eight and a half cents per gallon, um, is our state fuel tax. And that's whether it's two dollars a gallon or three dollars a gallon, it's still only twenty-eight and a half cents per gallon. Um, in two thousand and twenty, gas tax brought in about nine hundred and forty-six million dollars. In twenty twenty-one, um, well, I should say, the, the total for distribution in two thousand and twenty was nine hundred and forty-six. The total for distribution is eight hundred and fifty-eight million. So you can already see there's been a reduction in gas tax revenues due to the pandemic. That's a nine point three percent reduction. All right, so what are we really concerned about? We're really concerned about what we have available for us on our CASA roads. So we have this twenty-nine percent distribution that goes to all eighty-seven counties and their CASA roads. But even that twenty-nine percent gets divided even further. And how does that get divided? So we'll go into a little bit of a history lesson here. So, uh, this started being discussed in the nineteen fifties. And in nineteen fifty-eight is when they came up with this county state aid highway, uh, system. And then they needed to decide, do we divide this all equal to all eighty-seven counties? Each eighty-seven, each county gets the same amount? Or do we need to divide it up by lane miles? That kinda makes sense. If you have more miles of road in your county, uh, you have more costs to maintain. But then somebody said, well, what about we look at number of vehicles? Obviously, if you have more vehicles, they're paying into this 'cause they're buying more gas. More people are buying gas to fuel their vehicles. And you could also conversely say more vehicles are doing more damage to the road, so maybe you need to base it on number of vehicles. And then somebody said, well, what about needs? Uh, uh, how, what is the condition of your roadway? How much is it costing to repair those? Different areas of the state construction cost a little bit different. You'll notice that I have these in different colors because even in the fifties, there was a little bit of a rural metro divide. Yellow kinda benefited the rural counties. When you look at, if you divided all equally, generally the rural counties, the less populated would benefit because you're getting the same amount as a more populated county. Also likewise, lane miles, the rural counties tend to be larger in land area, thus more miles in between cities and communities, more miles of road. So a formula distributed based on lane miles may benefit more the rural counties. But conversely, number of vehicles, that would benefit your more developed or urban counties 'cause there's more population, more vehicles. And more roadway needs tend to, tend to favor s- metro counties as well because construction projects are more expensive. Uh, just the cost to maintain maybe is a little bit more when you're dealing with more traffic and those kinda things. Well, we also need to decide how much could be, should be dedicated to new construction and how much should be dedicated just to maintain what you already have. So what was decided? In nineteen fifty-eight, like I mentioned, uh, the original CASA formula came about. And they decided, well, ten percent of that twenty-nine percent should go to all counties equally. Every county gets the same base amount. But then we'll also consider motor vehicle registration. We'll consider your lane miles as well. Thirty percent of your, um, allocation will be based on your lane miles. Fifty percent will be determined on these needs. Now the needs needs to be determined by, uh, a group of people, so they, they created the screening board. And the screening board comprises of nine MinDOT districts plus six urban counties. And they look at what it costs to construct, uh, the whole statewide CASA system, uh, over twenty-five years. And there's a little, there's even another formula that, uh, that is the needs formula that we're not gonna go into today. And then they also decided that when you get your state aid money, sixty percent of that should go towards construction projects and the remainder forty percent can go to your, your maintenance of that. And so think of your pothole patching, your snow plowing every year, mowing of, uh, roadway ditches, uh, on CASA roads. That's where that, uh, comes from. Well, over time, this nineteen fifty-eight formula started to show its age. Um, since the sixties, we started to see the population of the metro areas grow dramatically. And the state was shifting from agricultural to an industry slash business type economy. And outstate, the population was generally decreasing, uh, but regional centers were starting to farm and farms were consolidating. The number of farm operators was, was declining. And in nineteen eighty-eight, by nineteen eighty-eight, the revenues, interestingly enough, was being generated fifty-five percent from the rural counties and forty-five percent to the metro counties. But going through the nineteen fifty-eight formula, only sixteen percent of the distribution was ending up in the metro area. That means eighty-four percent of the gas tax at that time, primarily the gas tax, uh, was being distributed back out to rural Minnesota. So this, this caused a big division, um, within the state. And we, we saw the metro rural divide really come to a head. And by two thousand and four, the Association of Minnesota Counties decided they needed to form this transportation work group to try to, to combat this. Um, and the goal of that group was to find an agreement between metro and rural on a distribution formula, so there would be hopes of new transportation funding. 'Cause what they were seeing was the legislature was not interested in granting more transportation funding or raising the gas tax, um, if the eighty-seven counties couldn't agree on how to distribute that, that, uh, money. So that's what they worked on. They, they, they saw that benefit of coming together, uh, in hopes of everybody getting something, more. So a new formula was created to direct funding to, uh, urbanize, uh, counties. And so what did they come up with in two thousand and four? They came up with two separate formulas. So we had the old nineteen fifty-eight formula that they called the apportionment sum, based on those original, uh, percentages, based on your, um, motor vehicle registration, your lane miles, and your need. And then they created this new formula that they called the excess sum. And that was based forty percent of it based on your vehicle registration and sixty percent of your needs. And the agreement was that any new transportation funding would go through the excess sum. Um, and that no county would receive less than they did prior to this. I should note, in two thousand and four, the gas tax was only twenty cents per gallon at that time. So that was the idea of having these two formulas. The base twenty cents per gallon would go through the apportionment sum. Anything new above that would go through this excess sum. Fast forward to two thousand and eight and the legislature did, uh, pass and the governor signed into law an eight and a half cent increase in the gas tax. Um, there were some changes to motor vehicle registrations, um, the motor vehicle sales tax became constitutionally dedicated. And this new formula was adopted into statute and defined as this excess sum. Um, so back, once again, that eight and a half cents, new eight and a half cents was gonna go through this new formula. There you go. So how did it work? Well, it worked just as, as the task force predicted. Um, in two thousand and eight, the revenues going into the H U T D F was about fifty-fifty rural metro again. After distribution, nineteen point four percent was going back to metro, eighty point six went to outstate. When the new formula got implemented in two thousand and eight and by two thousand thirteen, with revenue still about fifty-fifty, twenty-three point eight percent was going to the metro, leaving seventy-six going out to outstate. So the metro counties were starting to see, uh, a little bit of the benefit of what they've been crying about, um, the perceived inequities of the old formula. What was also happening by two thousand and thirteen, we were starting to see regional centers really starting to, to grow. Regional centers like Saint Cloud, Rochester, Mankato, those surrounding counties like Benton County, we were starting to see benefits from this new, um, excess sum formula as well because we started to see our populations start to increase. So we had those more vehicle registrations in our counties. So, the problem though is, construction costs continued to rise. Even though we got increase in the gas tax and increase in transportation funding, construction costs were increasing. Between two thousand and four and two thousand and thirteen, MinDOT reported that co- construction costs had increased over seventy percent. So a project that cost a million dollars in two thousand and four now costs one point seven million dollars in, by two thousand and thirteen. And our infrastructure continued to, uh, decrease or deteriorate. Uh, bridges were still needing to be replaced, roads were still, uh, continuing to crumble. So, this became a, uh, uh, another division point amongst the eighty-seven counties by two thousand and thirteen as well. And so, we started to see this split between rural and metro counties again. And we don't wanna go down that road because then, then there's once again no hope for increased transportation funding. So a task force was put together again by AMC in two thousand and thirteen. And the question was, why are we still looking at this idea of old money and new money? What if we just started looking at it again as, um, transportation mon- money? And so this new work group formed in two thousand and thirteen, looked at the two thousand and four, uh, formulas and the two thousand and eight increase in transportation, uh, increasing in fuel tax. Well, there's, there's the task force that was formed. It was, once again, it was, uh, uh, county commissioners, but, uh, uh, engineers from all nine MinDOT districts, um, and they were looking at this formula. So they came up with the idea of why are we looking at this as old money and new money and just look at it as new or as transportation money? And they came to an agreement that the twenty-eight and a half cents of gas tax would go through both formulas, but divided at sixty-eight percent through the old formula and thirty-two percent through the excess sum. Now, we're throwing out a lot of numbers at you, uh, regarding this. But I want, the point to make from this is, by dividing the whole twenty-eight and a half cents through these formulas, as gas tax, uh, revenues increased, both rural and metro counties would start to see increases in, um, uh, their CASA distribution. We won't go to that yet. So what was happening before they come up with this idea of going through the sixty-eight, twenty-thirty-two split, was the rural counties, they weren't receiving anything less, but they were not seeing increases in their CASA allocations as fast as the metro counties were. So that's what came, there was another compromise into the, after two thousand and thirteen, that now all money goes through this distribution formula where you have sixty-eight percent to the apportionment sum and thirty-two percent to the excess sum. Now, I don't expect you all to remember that. The point is that, as of today, we have an agreement with all eighty-seven counties on how to distribute our transportation dollars through the H U T D F. So that's where, when you talk about, uh, to me or county engineers across the state, we're usually pretty adamant about transportation funding going through the H U T D F. And it comes back to this because we have an agreement on how to distribute that. Um, whether it's fair or not is not really an argument anymore. We have an agreement on how to distribute those funds. So we'll kinda move on. Um, just wanted to touch a little bit on CASA versus county roads. Statewide, there's over thirty thousand CASA miles, um, and over fourteen thousand miles of county roads. Um, and just like we talked about, our CASAs are funded with this H U T D F, but our county roads rely on local sources of funding. We have the levy, wheelage tax, local option, sales tax for transportation. Uh, sometimes federal money can be used on local roads if they meet, um, the classification and qualification for federal funding. But no H U T D F for those local roads. Both CASA and county roads, we're not seeing that our funding sources are keeping up with the maintenance, uh, that we need. Our county roads continue to fall behind, just like our CASA roads. That's why Benton County, we're fortunate that we were able to adopt the, the sales tax for transportation, uh, two years ago. But many counties were having to look at increasing their wheelage tax or their levy just to keep up with their county roads. I don't wanna go into this a lot, but there was, um, this TFAK report is, is called. It was convened by Governor Dayton at the time to look at the statewide transportation network and see what was needed. And this TFAK, uh, TFAK report came out with three different funding scenarios. And basically, they recommended that Minnesota should be investing enough transportation money to make our transportation network globally competitive. And, um, they, they recognized that, uh, in two thousand and twelve, needed additional four hundred and fifty million dollars for CASA roads and probably need another four hundred and fifty million dollars invested in just the local roads. So that's nine hundred million dollars over twenty years. Uh, we talked about the needs formula, that just kinda goes into it. Right now that the CASA needs, is saying that they need eighteen and a half billion dollars over twenty-five years just to maintain, um, the CASA roads. And so county road system is about forty-six percent of the CASA system. That would be another eight and a half billion dollars over twenty-five years. Um, divided by twenty-five, we're at about a billion dollars per year should be invested on CASA and county road, uh, system just to maintain. And this was kinda supported by the TFAK report as well. Um, so that's what, uh, a lot of county engineers, uh, a lot of MinDOT engineers are saying that we need one point one to almost one and a half billion dollars per year investment in roads and bridges just to maintain it. Um, so that's the big number, uh, that's statewide. A billion dollars a year should be invested in our roads and bridges. Okay, well, let's look at real numbers. What do we got for two thousand and twenty? I showed earlier that we were nine percent less, uh, gas. I showed earlier that we were nine percent less gas tax received in two thousand and twenty one than we did the previous year. So our two thousand and twenty one CASA distribution for all eighty seven counties was six hundred and eighteen million dollars. In two thousand and twenty, it was six hundred and seventy five million. That's an eight point four percent reduction. Our two thousand and twenty distribution was two point eight million dollars available for construction, one point eight million dollars for maintenance. That's the sixty forty split of our distribution. In two thousand and twenty one, we received only two point five million dollars for construction, one point seven, let's say, for maintenance. That's a reduction of two hundred and sixty four thousand dollars for construction and a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for maintenance. Just to put that in context, we spend about a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars a year on fuel, fueling our plow trucks, our county pickups and things like that. I will add at this point that it was kind of serendipitous of us that this year we don't have any CASA construction projects planned. So the benefit of this, I guess maybe to us, seeing this reduction, we're not going to immediately feel these effects. The state aid, the way the state aid system works on the accounting side is that distribution will sit in an account for us until we're ready to use it. Next year, we're planning on some CASA projects, so we'll need that next year. So we're not going to feel the effects as as much as some counties would, let's say, that we're planning CASA reconstruction projects this summer. What we, what I'm more concerned is our maintenance this year. Now, we have had a relatively mild winter, so we haven't done as much snow plowing as we had when we look at like two thousand and nineteen, when we we had a maybe more of a normal winter. So hopefully, some of those things, these offset. But we don't really know because this is what we have available to us this year that we know now. We'll just have to watch that as we go over the course of this year and try to make sure that we come in, our costs come in under what we were given. Because we do count on that revenue every year to when we when we work on our budget for the highway department. Well, I do want to add also that that the townships, you know, they receive a portion of the gas tax in the H U T D F as well. So in two thousand and twenty, there was two hundred and eight thousand dollars that was available to distribute to all, what, eleven of our townships in our county. This year, there's only a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. So when you distribute that to all of our townships, it's not a huge amount. I I believe a lot of our townships are having to rely heavily on levy to maintain their roads as well. They're not able to maintain their roads solely on this this source of money. But they they are taking a hit as well. So that's fifteen thousand dollars less than than the previous year. Oh, yeah, there's the township distribution levy. So if you didn't know, by statute, each county has to adopt a distribution formula on how to distribute that township money to the townships in their county. Our formula is based on just one percent based on their levy. So think of it like if they're levying quite a bit for their own roads and bridges, that takes into consideration. So the more you levy yourself, it's kind of like we're recognizing local contribution. The more you're contributing yourself, the more maybe you get from the township road fund. But it's it's relatively small, it's only one percent. But most of the distribution is based on their miles of township road and their population. With townships like Watab having the highest population, they do receive the largest portion of that two hundred thousand dollars money that we distribute. So if you get any calls from your townships, yeah, it is less this year. It's because we received less to to distribute. So that's that's the big takeaway from that that slide there. So what's next? As crazy as this year is, maybe you've already heard it, the the state budget forecast is now forecasting a budget surplus. Us county engineers, we have heard recently too, there is, the state of Minnesota did receive a hundred and sixty three million dollars of federal COVID relief for transportation. And so that's being discussed right now too at the state level on how to distribute those federal funds. Us county engineers, we've spoken up and said that a lot of us have a big concern with our maintenance, not so much on the construction side, but how are we going to maintain our roads this year? Because we really do count on that revenue. The problem is federal dollars have a lot of strings attached to them. And that's why they're they're normally used for construction projects where we're applying for those competitively. And actually, when we apply for those federal dollars, we adopted a resolution saying that we're going to maintain that ourselves. If you give us the money to construct it, we will maintain it. So we're trying to work through those things with federal highway and MinDOT on how can we use those federal dollars for maintenance activities when it's normally for construction? And we're hoping there's not a lot of federal oversight. A lot of times with federal money, there's a lot of provisions on federal wage rates, although we we try to buy American when we can, but certifying that we're buying American materials. Are we taking into consideration disadvantaged businesses? Those kind of things, it comes with a lot of oversight. And we don't really think those are necessary when we're just doing day to day maintenance activities with it. So maybe there'll be some relief to kind of offset the reduction in our revenues, but that's still yet to to be determined. So the big goal is, I just wanted to point out that we are receiving less state money this year than we did in previous years. But we're going to have to watch this year. And I don't know if there's going to be any help at this point. So I know I threw a lot of information, a lot of history, a lot of numbers out there, but I'll stand for questions if there's any questions regarding CASA distribution and state funding sources.
Any questions?
Lot of information.
Yeah.
So big things is that eighty seven counties agree on how to distribute money. More money goes into the H U T D F, all eighty seven counties get more, large cities get more, townships get more. But right now, we're receiving less than we did in the previous year, which has not happened in a long time.
Which is good.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chris on this, I think?
You covered it quite well.
Thank you, Chris.
And easily end and take a seat. All right, there's no further questions. My thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Got any other updates for us or anything?
Yeah, oh, I don't know if I have shared this. We did receive word late, just recently, that we did receive some state bridge money to replace those two bridges that we were talking about earlier this year.
Great.
So we have some things to do to finalize. I will bring be bringing forth an agreement to the board soon that that stipulates that. So I think just paying patient for a little bit, it paid off. We do now, the next step for those projects is to make sure we get our D N R permits to reconstruct those bridges. But we have bridges approved, we do have funding approved for those. We anticipate reconstructing those later this year. We're already too late to do anything starting this spring, but we can do those easily this fall as well.
Great.
So.
That'll help. Good job. News.
That will help. That's a, it's going to, it's over half a million dollars that we're receiving for those two bridges. So that's the one on gravel fifty and the one on county road eighty. Both of those are one lane bridges right now and in poor shape.
So as them two come off our list and what do we have? We still have a fair amount of bridges on it and?
Yeah, we still have three more bridges ourself that are structurally deficient, that are eligible, that we're hoping that we get some more maybe next year. Likewise, there's there's been some talk at the legislature about another bonding bill. We would be in favor of that if there's money going towards local bridges. So we know next year we'll have some more bridges statewide, there'll be more. And each year we do inspections, you know, bridges are getting worse rating each year. So we get through these five bridges that were structurally deficient, we'll have more in the future someday.
So if you take the one from Watab Township and the two from the county, that's three bridges that were very deficient.
Yeah.
That'll be replaced.
Yeah, I was talking about five just on the county system. We have another five that are on the township system that are eligible for replacement as well that we're still working through. So.
Chris, in regards to the half a million dollars, was that, where did that fit in what you asked for?
So we got what we asked for. Well, everything was eligible, there are some things that are not eligible for that due to the nature of bridge bonding funds and state law and stuff, but everything that's eligible, we received. So.
That's great.
So and we were planning on paying for our local share with our our sales taxes. We've got that side covered as well.
And I'm not holding it to dollars, but if I recall right, county fifty was three hundred and twenty five grand. What was eighty?
It was a little bit more, it was about that, it was just at four hundred thousand. So so the grant amount was over five hundred thousand dollars for both of those bridges. So we got about sixty percent funded from the state on both of those those bridges, if I remember correctly. So.
Great, thank you, Chris.
That really helps stretch our dollars.
Yep, thank you.
Very good.
Then we'll move on to commissioner meeting updates.
Okay, I'll start.
That's kind of a first, isn't it?
Yeah, well, normally I'm at the last, but that's fine by me. So of course, Airport Authority, the Ad-Hud Committee lasted an hour and it was dissolved at the end of that hour. And then we spent two hours meeting with the new advisory board. And that was kind of interesting and very knowledgeable. And they're going to be getting a lot of information moving forward. AMC conference, my committee, they did talk about a six percent decrease into certain areas of human services they were thinking about. In one area, and I don't have my paperwork, one area was two point nine percent decrease too. So we'll see what happens there. I don't know, it's not good. And then I also had society, historical society. So they got their bids back to redo the inside. And let's just say, I don't think they knew exactly how much it was going to cost. It was an eye opener for all of them, so now they're going back to the drawing board and seeing what they can can do and can't do. So and that's all.
Okay. Obviously, we had the AMC Government one oh one, the seventeenth. That was informational, that was for all of us new ones. It's so I got a little bit out of that. I got more out of the all day AMC on the eighteenth. I thought, I posed a question from the gov, to the governor, and I never got a answer yet on that. So they they assured us we would get one, so. So and my my question was, is he's big on emergency management? And we we talked about the, there's some deficiencies in funding and stuff like that. And I posed a question online to to find out the the ratio that I brought up in the past meeting of forty eight percent least funded and thirty or in three percent highest volunteer. And I I actually got a response from the lady saying that, great question, let us get back to you. So I'm, it's not quite two weeks yet, so. Well, I'm sure that'll be coming. The policy committee, we spent a lot of time actually on exactly what we went through earlier today, was a mutual aid agreement for basically one situation coming up and new new policy changes that could come out of that. So there was a lot of commissioners against that. Other than that, that is about it for me.
Okay. Me to go?
Yep.
All right, I had the opportunity, I guess, to miss a few meetings while I was gone on vacation, so that was good. I'm going to have to get caught up on a few of those that us us newbies were supposed to attend. I had the opportunity to meet with Sarah Brun at the city of Foley, along with Mayor Bettendorf. They were very good about updating myself and whoever else wanted to be there at a later public meeting. But we talked about the early annexation agreement that's coming up with Gilminton Township. You know, from my personal perspective, I think this is something that's fifteen plus years overdue. I know the County Planning Commission has been looking at that for years and trying to have some direction on what to do with the outskirts of the city of Foley. And so I, there seems to be a lot of positivity for that. What came out of that meeting was a meeting then on the twenty third, an informal public meeting that the local Gilminton Township residents were invited to, Gilminton Township officials, city officials, county representatives. A shout out to Amanda, she was there, Roxanne was there to be able to answer some questions from township residents. And I think it was a very good meeting. Sarah did a great job of a presentation explaining the differences between orderly annexation and and direct annexation. I believe that the residents had their their questions answered, so there was ample time for that. I do know that tentatively, the city officials and the township officials are planning a meeting next Tuesday, the ninth, to potentially go forward with their annexation agreement. There are a few items in there that did need to get corrected. They seem to be very minor ones. For example, the city still had in in their records that we were one per forty in the county. And so anyways, they they changed some minor things. So hopefully, they're going to be able to move ahead with that. So we're looking forward to that. Other than that, that was really the only thing that I had.
Okay, Mr.?
In downtown Saint Cloud, they're working on a children's museum. And it's a huge project down in the Herberger's area, building down there in that area. They have for all ages and different aspects. And there'll be lots of volunteers working with that. And it looks like it's going to be awesome project.
Okay.
Had a few updates on the other, nothing real crucial. With the Highway twenty three and ten intersection, they're not going to be disrupting traffic yet, it's just some groundwork, stuff that they're working on beforehand.
Okay. Okay, let's see, I'll start on the sixteenth, I had library. We had a finance committee meeting at five thirty. Finance is in pretty good shape. We have a substantial bound, good balance at the end of the year again, which part of it was due to, we didn't have trucks on the road, we didn't have some personnel. And so where we're going to go with that, we adopted a finance, the budget plan was adopted is how we go forward. And that, we elected the finance chair, which is yours truly again. We approved, we approved the audit outtake meeting. We have to have an audit again and that'll take place. And I believe Commissioner Wincher, Phoby, myself and Bravender from Wright County are going to sit on that. The fourth quarter was approved. And then we went into our work session and we had a huge discussion on diversity, inclusion and all the other stuff that goes with it. We had, we had a subcommittee back when, you know, after the March or the the June stuff with the George Floyd situation. And that got pretty tense at times because some people on that that committee thought very strongly of it. And some of the commissioners and that, I mean, they came as far as they had this three or four sentence deal that they wanted us to read before every board meeting about. And it was basically about the Navajo and somebody, you know, some other that the land was taken from them illegally by our forefathers and all this. We had one commissioner that actually left the meeting because of that. So that went forward for for a while and I had calls right after the meeting from a couple of commissioners, like where did this come from, you know? And so I, I don't think it's going to go forward in any direction, right, as of now, because I don't think there's enough to do it. But that was basically in our work session and that was one of the few things that came out of it. And we spent, I mean, it was supposed to be, we were supposed to be, the meeting started at six o'clock and we were supposed to be done by seven thirty and I think we were still going at eight fifteen, you know, because of that one issue. So that was kind of, you know, so there's more to come on the finance of the library. I think it's in, actually working in the right direction. I'm really starting to get satisfied on that one.
Mr. Chair, are we going to see reduction then in our bill next year?
Well, I'll try. You know, and I think, you know, we have, we got it in 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 the minutes that we will continue to use some of this, these reserves that we got. We used two hundred and fifty thousand this year. And it was, it was motion to go forward as we don't need, you know, seven months of reserves. We need to scroll that down to less than six is what, you know, even four. So I think we will see that. We have had a lot of personnel, we have a lot of personnel that's out and that's going to reflect some of the budget too. We're not, they didn't rehire the, some of the stuff that, you know, retirements and moving on stuff. So I think that'll, that'll be, and then of course, you were all on on the AMC Legislative Conference. And then that morning, I had the Tri-County Solid Waste, the first meeting. And I you was you on virtually? No. Um so we had, we started out on a kind of a different note that um the the I don't know who, it was before I got there, that because me and and Commissioner Johnson are new and Benton County's turned to be chair. They uh had a motion to amend the uh the bylaws that we keep the same chairs last year moving forward because of the pandemic and because of that. And so I told him, I said, you know, I talked to Scott prior to that and I said, that is uh I I basically, you know, that's all fine, but I think both Commissioner Johnson, who has had a lot of years of experience sharing planning commission and that, and myself, who's been on the board for six plus years, I don't think it's a big issue and that. But if this is the wishes of the committee, go forward. And uh one of the sure Stearns County Commissioners says, I nominate Commissioner Pop and we moved on. There was no more discussion. So so I'm the chair of that. Um they had a quite a few things that they have a strategic plan that they put forth. There's some bills coming out to increase uh fees and stuff like that. Uh uh they had a lot. I think we did a strategic plan and we did a, what else did we do that? Uh oh, a contract with Pope Douglas. Um there's some concern, you know, that Pope Douglas is, we've got a built-in fee schedule rate for the next few years. There's some concerns about that. So they're gonna be um moving on from that. Then I had uh park, the park board last Monday. Do you have a question, Steve? No?
Not yet.
Okay. We had the park board last Monday. They they motioned and resolutioned a few things forward. Um they're, you know, they're gonna look at doing something with the trees out there. They want to get about, see about getting the the park.
Could you mention that recommendation they had about the trail, the 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 motion on on building the trail along fifty-five?
And that's the resolution they put forth, that the trail that when we do design the road and that, that if if we get the park dedication or the trail grant, that the county does this at the same time as we do the road. And then the county would have to front the money, because I don't believe the funding's coming until twenty twenty-five. So we would be on the hook for, you know, I don't know, it's a couple hundred thousand bucks, I believe.
Roughly, yeah.
For a few years for that. But it would, you know, their feeling was it would just make sense and we're, you know, when we're there to do that.
Question on that quick and Monty maybe answers this. When the county fronts money like that, do we get interest back on that money?
Unlikely.
Okay. So would we typically just put that money out and we get paid back at a later time?
We would not get interest.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and so that was a couple of issues that uh this is a pretty aggressive committee. I mean.
They are.
Yeah. You know, and they're they're looking to restore that, or I shouldn't say they're looking to restore that shed. And the friends of the the Graves family, friends of the park, would like that machine shed restored. There was some discussion on whether, if you start restoring it, when does it not become history? When does it become a new shed? And when does, you know, when does it not? You know, how do you restore it to s- save the history of it? So they had a lot of discussion on that. And it's a, it, you know, we got a bid on that a couple of years ago, I believe. And it was, what, around twenty grand?
It's not inexpensive.
Yeah, and my theory is on that, that we could do that for a lot less. It it didn't need to be, I think, our, you know, if we could find somebody that wanted to do that, could probably do it for less than that. And so the they're gonna dissolve the friends of the of the Great River Regional Park. And they have, what, thirty-three thousand bucks, thirty-one hundred?
Well, there was like only four hundred dollars in their.
Four hundred left, yeah, and then.
They're going to donate three thousand to help restore the machine shed.
Machine shed if we get a bid or get it done. So um that part. But yeah, they're gonna dissolve that fund that they have there for the park. So. And then we had a lot of discussion on the trees out there. Um Greg Bristol's a member of that board and they did some work in with the Township of Lang- the Langola Township did when that storm went through. Somebody came in and they actually paid for um the trees. I think Bristol said that he got a couple thousand bucks for and he's got ten acres. And they they took the trees, they ground, there was nothing left. They they did a really good, nice job. So he was gonna look if he could find that, because uh the consensus is that we don't do something with the trees in that park, thin them or do something. We're gonna have a lot of dead trees. We're dying every day. We need to take out every third row or something right now. And there is some value, my in my thought, there is some value in that um in that the logs or the the mulch or something that's out there.
And there was very little cost to them because the ones that were taking the trees were, that was their their payment for.
Yeah, yeah. They they there was a few guys, a few people up there that, you know, got upwards of five thousand bucks when they got done with that. So so Greg was gonna look into that and come back to us. Uh so that was really good.
Mister Chair, so did you guys talk about recycling at the park board?
Yes, we did.
And?
They're.
I hope you're gonna move forward and try to.
Grant to get recycled uh dumpsters out there or dump trash in.
Thank you.
Uh what's his name? Dave Dix, I think.
Oh, Rixey. Oh, Rix.
Hey, Rix.
Yes.
Yeah, he's on there and he he was brought that forward. So that was another thing that they did. Yeah, so it was a good good meeting, I thought, with them, them people. And they're gonna meet again in April, I believe. And we're gonna meet out at the park eventually here to look at that. They did talk some about Benton Beach, you know, what we can do there, how we're gonna and the the Y-five grant to get, you know, Y-five hooked up out there and see if that would help people or if we could increase the fees or, you know, whatever. So that was some of the things they did. And then uh earlier in that day, I had the Tri-County Extension Meeting. That's with Morrison and and uh Stearns County. And that went went quite well. We did hear um that some of our staff is actually fielding calls from Sherburne County because Sherburne County is their their staff, especially in the livestock and the crops. He's doing a lot with them that they're they're not uh and we don't get any compensation. He won't do a visit out there with them. So we need to, we kind of said, we need to have a conversation with Sherburne County to see if maybe they wanna fund it. The it doesn't seem like they have an appetite in Sherburne County, I guess, for extension like maybe we do. They to a lesser degree. You know, they got one he one person here that's covering all things right now. So.
And they don't really turn anybody away if they call.
And yeah, they won't turn anybody away. They can, they're not gonna go into the county to do like um Nathan Drewett said, he has several, you know, can I come to my farm and look at these weeds? Or can you come and see what's wrong with my, you know, with my soybeans? And he said he can't do that. But he said he can forward the call to somebody that maybe could come. But he said there's not, you know, by the time they get there, it's not gonna be like if he would, he said he would just normally get up and go, you know. And in turn, they do get calls from um Malax County too. Not so much from any other town, but they said Malax and Sherburne seem the ones a little bit out of crowing, but not much. So. And I think that was about all that extension had. And then uh I had the BEP meeting on the twenty-first, twenty-fifth through Zoom. Um Amanda gave pretty much the updates on that. She updated us on a few projects that are going forward. Uh um membership is really in good shape. I think we're down to seven, seven or eight members that are unpaid. And that does include the City of Sock Rabbits. They're waiting for a meeting they're gonna have here pretty quick with a couple of them. So um I think after the meeting and they meet with Amanda and we show them, you know, you just look at the number of businesses that got grants in Sock Rabbits. I can't believe they ain't gonna come to terms. So and then on the twenty-sixth, I had an AMC Extension Meeting. And that's to set our um Miranda of Agreements for that come back to the counties. Um we're gonna have an increase. Oh, going back to the Tri-County, there may be an increase coming to Benton County because the proposal was fo- set forward that um Katie Drewitz, who is our Heart of Culture, she's at ninety-two percent of the time, and they wanna make her full-time. Um she's doing far more than full-time work right now. And Benton and Morrison County would have to would probably be in line to pick up that share. And it was about seventy-two hundred bucks. Um so, you know, how that plays out, that's where we got into the whole conversation with um about Wright or Sherburne County maybe funding some of that. But I think the, you know, the agreement was that um they wanna see her full-time so we could have and the Miranda of Agreement is gonna be uh two point two-five percent increase next year in twenty-twenty-two. That was set forth by the AMC District Reps, Commissioners. Um they were from pretty much all over, I think. I don't know if we had anybody local. I think Bruce Messer was on it from Sherburne County. I think he was the only person that was of local that was. That was about all at AMC. Uh one thing that was quite interesting on AMC is that I believe it was Wabashaw County. They are looking at optioning out. You give the ninety-day notice and you can option out of your contract with the University of Minnesota Extension Service if you don't feel you're getting the deal. Um and there was some more concern afterwards. I got an email from, I can't remember which county, that, you know, Wabashaw ain't the only county that's looking at this. Part of it, I think, has to do with the um, you know, the way meetings were handled and the university completely shut down. They have no staff in their county buildings. And things have just slid all the way downhill and they don't feel for, you know, the what is ours, two hundred and some thousand bucks?
At least, yes.
Yeah, that they're getting, the money is worth and they might turn to a different direction. Um but you have to give a ninety-day notice. And, you know, there was, a number of years ago, we actually looked at that here because we were having trouble with um the state in a personnel problem we had down in that office. So um they kind of said, well, we had to get ninety-day notice for that. So um but, you know, if you got, I, my belief is if you got a good regional director, that they're they're paying attention to these things and getting them things, the fires put out before they get there. So there's more to come with that. And um they're gonna talk to these counties that are wanting to option out um and see if they can beat them because, you know, the the whole Extension Service is set up with regional directors and and educators and that. And if you start losing some of that money, then you're, you know, they're gonna be short. And I don't think the state is gonna fund us to a larger degree. And then I also had one water, one plan last Thursday. They actually moved forward and we got the consensus to go to a JPE, right? Yeah, Joint Powers Entity Agreement. So that'll be moving forward. And then on um, that was a lot of the discussion was about the Joint Powers Entity, pretty much for the whole meeting. This should be moving forward. They think uh sometime within the next year, we'll wrap this up. And then we'll have to go to a uh a Board of the Rum River deal. So we'll be looking probably closer to somebody that lives close to that area to represent that board.
So Mason, he was looking your direction.
Certainly was.
I understand.
I think that was, that was all that I had. So.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I did overlook one um from our last meeting at the Emergency or Central Minnesota um Emergency Management Board. There was a committee that was uh formed with all agencies from medical to police, fire, everything like that to be on a um st- uh basically Emergency Communications Board. Uh I did uh, I am on that. And we had our first webinar meeting on the twenty-fourth for, it was about two, two and a half hours.
Okay.
So it's basically trying to expand the mu- no, Emergency Communications along with broadband and and everything like that. So.
Uh going back to the BEP Board, they they have a balance right now of about two hundred and fifteen thousand in their account after the money they got from from doing the grants. We do have nine old members that yet to collect from. Otherwise, all the the previous twenty twenty members have paid twenty-twenty-one dues. So and then that does include, you know, some of that. I think Compier is looking at sending theirs in yet, the City of Sock Rabbits. We figure we'll be down to, you know, maybe a three, four somewhere is when we're done. They did adopt a new uh uh video. Um they're gonna do four projects or whatever. And then they did approve a proposal to have to get Amanda on intern if she can get a grant for it. She's looking at getting a grant. So and then we're looking at having our April um April uh Membership Meeting. We're looking for a place to have that if we can find someplace out and about. Otherwise, I think they're gonna look at um Jack and Jim's in Duell. They think they can space out there and probably have seventy-five people or so. So um we don't, from my looks, we don't leave a a stone unturned in that BEP Board or that BEP organization. So.
Good.
Yeah, that's good. And I think I think as the year, as the year goes on, we're gonna see some, maybe some fruitful deals. They're pretty sure that she's made it public, the uh uh Performance Foods and Rice is pretty much a go there. I think they're settled between here and one other state. And so she's gonna work work that pretty heavily. So I think they got a big it big footprint in Rice. I can't believe they'd move somewhere else. So that was all that I had. And then we'll move on to Commissioner Concerns. Anybody got any?
Nothing that can be addressed on Thursday.
Yeah, okay. All right. Set committee of the whole.
Hi, Mister Chair. Just wanted to add, you're invited to the Greater St. Cloud Corporation Annual Meeting, April eighth. And it begins at three forty-five till five fifteen. It's gonna be virtual. So we'll just register you all and you'll get an email with the uh virtual meeting information. So we'll go ahead and get you signed up. Again, that's April eighth at three forty-five. That's all we had in terms of new stuff.
Okay. Motion to set that?
So moved. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to set the April eighth deal. These used to be, uh for those of you that, they used to be uh uh seven, seven-thirty in the morning in person. And that they were well attended and very interesting. So I'm hoping that, you know.
Get back to that.
Sometime we get back to that. They've they've provided good communications with other commissioners and with people of the business area. I mean, they were, they were, they were, I really enjoyed them when we went.
You just can't network at these virtual things.
No, you know, you got a little free breftis and everything else.
Yeah.
You know, I am about free breftis. So then we need to uh.
Next is Monty with the closed meeting.
Do the closed, conduct the closed meeting.
Yeah, ready for that. You wanna do, you do the motion to go in closed session. We gotta get all this stuff set up.
Okay.
That way we can take a minute.
All right. I'll make.
Nope, nope. Go ahead, sir.
I'll make a motion uh to adjourn uh our regular meeting.
Nope.
And go into.
No.
Oh, just go into closed session. I'll make a motion, go into closed session.
Perfect. Second.
Second. Motion been made and seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry.
And you'll shut down this recording and we asked you to start a new recording because uh we have to record.
Every, we had two things on two days last week and every day last week.